All right, thank you all for coming. I will call to order the study session. We have two items in agenda item number one, GP 2503 Harvest Grove and Z 25-03 Harvest Grove. And we will bring up Keith. And we have a recusal from Commissioner Gage. Please note.
Testing. Testing. Hello, testing.
Maybe if I testing? Yeah, just making sure.
Yeah, we can hear the echo on her microphone. Testing, one, two, three. Testing. Oh, there we go. All right. No worries, thank you very much. Thank goodness for the IT people of the world, right? All right. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. My project that I have before you today, my only one, is Harvest Grove. See if I can get the clicker to work. Not yet, there we go. Did you do that or did I do that? Okay. All right, so the project site, as you can see on the map in front of you, is located south of the Loop 202 freeway and the area, you know, the banner, the banner hos- not banner, this is a Mercy Gilbert Hospital. I get confused by the one up north all the time. So the south of the Mercy Gilbert Hospital at the southeast corner of Jermaine and Valvista Drive. The project site is 311 acres. And the north portion of it, as you can see, there's a little blue line on the screen. And north, the north, about 25% of the project or so, I don't have the exact acreage off the top of my head, is located in the Santan character area and the remainder of the project is- sorry, the north half is not located in the Santan character area, excuse me, let me correct myself. And the southern 75% is located in the Santan character area. So just wanted to give you a little context for where the project site is located. So the request that before you tonight, or what I'm presenting to you for a study session tonight, is a minor general plan amendment on about 179 acres and the P 80 rezone on the, over the whole 311 acres. And we are requesting some input tonight based on, of course, the two requests. We're requesting input on the two requests and your thoughts on that. And of course, the deviations that are propos- that we're proposing. And of course, we have some concerns with the project that we're probably get your input on as well. So just to start off, the existing and proposed general plan designations on the site. On the left, I took a snip of our current general plan map, the layer on our map. As you can see, the whole entire project site is, has a dent, has a general plan designation of residential two to three and a half dwelling units per acre. The applicant, however, is only proposing to change 179 of that 311 acres to different general plan designations. The remainder of the property will stay residential two to three and a half. So on that 179 acres that they're changing, 35 of it will be regional commercial. Forty-three or so acres will be residential three and a half to five dwelling units an acre. Thirty-eight acres or so will be five to eight dwelling units per acre. Thirty-five point seven three will be eight to 14 dwelling units per acre. A little over 17 acres is a higher density range of 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. And then even higher density than that is the 9.58 dwelling units per, or excuse me, 9.5 acres at 25 to 50 dwelling units per acre. And you can see the, the blue line shows the Santan character area boundary. Like I said a minute ago, everything north of that is not in the Santan character area. And you can see on the map the balance of the uses. The denser product is to the north, the denser things and I'll show you the development plan here in just a second and we'll kind of, we'll kind of go through that and break that down. But I just wanted to show you this general plan amendment map so you can see where those designations are located throughout the 311 acre property. The zoning, the existing and the proposed zoning. Existing zoning on the left, as you can, today, the existing zoning is about 242 acres. The part in the darker yellow is zoned SF 35 for lower density residential development. And then about 60, these are rough acres, this is, this is approximate. I don't have the exact numbers, but about 68 acres of that is SF 15, again, larger lots. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site and transition the site from this larger lot, lower density type residential that's been approved on this site for a very long time to 35.46. And on the right-hand side, it shows you where all those zoning districts are located. So up in that non-Santan character area in the north 25%, you'll see a 35 acre regional commercial piece. You'll, there's a multifamily, a 17.16 acre multifamily medium parcel right along Jermaine Road. And then as we transition further south, you'll see a multifamily high, about nine acres of that, kind of a south of that, south and east of that regional commercial. There's a 17.1 acre MFL piece at the very southwest corner. There's 17.92 acres of SFA and this is kind of spread out, it's kind of spread out, it's kind of in the north, north corner. And then SFD is kind of spread out a little bit throughout the development. And that's about 81.44 acres. And then 82 acres of SF 6. And then you have 50 acres of SF 8 and those districts are, districts are spread out. So as you can see, in the non-Santan character area portion of the development, that top 25%, the denser product, from a residential standpoint, you see the multifamily medium, the multifamily high, the, the SFA in that bluish color right next to the MFM that is that 17 or so acre, excuse me, a 17 acre townhouse type product. And then it transitions into single family as it goes south. And then once you hit the, the Santan character area, you'll get your larger lots. And then there is some smaller lots, there's some single family detached mixed in there as well. But I'm going to go ahead and show you the development plan now so it will kind of all make sense to you, what the applicant is really proposing and how it lays out. So here's the development plan. There is, the applicant is proposing 1,759 residential units. Out of those about 1,700 units, 1,033 of them are single family. Got 190 SFA. And those, those single family attached units are all of that stuff. And it looks like it's parcel four, I can see there. It's at the north end, right next to the MFM. And then you have 480 units of, or homes of SFD. And that's kind of spread out a little bit more. You can see that kind of along that main spine road a little bit. I like to call them, I like to call those ones like row homes that are right there. They're, they're, they're alley loaded products, but they have access in those alleys and then they, they front that collector street. And then you, and then there's some other SFD to the south as well, and it's like a pink color. So it's kind of spread out a little more. And then you have 243 lots that are SF 6, you're getting into a little bit larger lot sizes. And, and there's a breakdown in your, your packet that shows, in those tables that show the lot sizes and ranges of lots in those SF 6 and SF 8 categories. SF 8, they have some lot sizes, there's 120 of those lots that, that can be up to 10,000 square feet. There's some, obviously some 8,000 square foot lots. And then of course, the 6,000 square foot lots. So there's a varying mix of lot sizes that are in the single family portion. And you can see on the land use plan here, the, there's some sprinkled in, in between like the parcels, the multi, the, the single family in the middle of the development, you can see there's like purple next to the tan. Those are the larger lots. Those are the lots that are like eight, up to 10,000 square feet and some of them are up to 8,000 square feet on the west side of the development. So that's, they're kind of sprinkling in some larger lots in the middle of lots that are a little bit smaller. So, and then like I said a minute ago, you have the single, the, the commercial piece at that northwest corner, at the corner, the hard corner of Jermaine Road and Valvista. As of right now, it's designed as a pretty standard suburban type shopping center. It appears that there's a grocer and some pad sites. And, but as a whole, the overall development, as we look at the density of this development as a whole, the whole development has about 5.64 dwelling units per acre for the entire development. The area outside of the Santan character area, that portion to the north, that north 25% is about approximately 7.75 dwellings per acre. The area within the Santan character area is about a little over five dwelling units per acre in the area that's within the Santan character area. So you can see the varying densities that the applicant is, is proposing to create. It gets really dense, or more dense, excuse me, to the north and it gets less dense as it goes further south, except for there's a multifamily low parcel down there in the far southwest corner that we don't have a design for yet. And then eventually, there is a, there's a companion applicant, or a, a separate application that we're in process of reviewing for, for parcel 10, it's a part of a separate request for a neighborhood commercial piece that's not part of this request before you tonight. But we're, we're reviewing that at, at this time too, and we don't have a design for it. We don't see a design for it yet. So that's the development plan as a whole. There's three acts, there's several access points. There's one access point off of Jermaine Road. And there's two, three access points off of Valvista Drive. And then one off of Queen Creek Road. The, there is, the main access to this development will be on that center spine road. That's a collector road that curves. And you have a lot of homes, about 125 homes that front that center spine road. And then there's also a collector that comes, it's called Kingbird. It comes in off of Valvista and then tees right into that center collector. The main collector spine road that goes up through the development, the applicant is proposing a modified cross-section with a, for a collector street that has a large center median about 13 to 15 feet wide. And then it has upon one side, it'll have, it'll have parallel parking on the side where all those row homes are, what I like to call them row homes. It'll have parallel parking and, and bike lanes on the outside. And then there's also a certain, they have some kind of traffic calming techniques that they're trying to employ where they have a landscape island bump out in certain spots to kind of help calm traffic. But as in the whole, majority of the, the app, the residents will access their neighborhood pods through that center spine road. And that will be the main carrier of all the traffic through this whole development. So that is the development plan. So wanted to show you really quickly the open space plan. There's about 78 or so acres of open space within the whole entire development, which equates to about 26.4% of common open, of open space area. There's a 2.83 acre Central Park, I hope I got that acreage right for the Central Park. And then there's about four acres of pocket parks that are spread throughout the whole entire development. So you can see where that Central Park is. And then of course, at the main entrances, they have, it looks like they're going to have a landscape nodes at the main entrances to kind of accentuate and create a sense of arrival as you come into the neighborhood. The circulation plan, as I talked about a minute ago, that major collector street running right through the development. And, and then some feeder roads that come off of Valvista, that tee right into that. And then we've already talked about the access. But I just wanted to show you the circulation plan so you can get a better sense for, for where the access is coming from. You'll also notice that there is a, at the northeast corner and the, and the southeast corner, you have this little pink colored road, it's called Coronado Street. That's a major collector road that on our master transportation plan is, is calling for that and requiring that to go through. The applicant is proposing it to stop and to kind of cul-de-sac, if you will. So there will be, they're proposing an access point kind of in between the apartment, close to the apartment complex, kind of in that townhome area that feeds that major collector. And then they're not proposing any access off of that Coronado Street collector that deadends at the southeast corner of the project site. Path and trails plan, you can see, I know it's kind of hard to read this plan, being in a portrait mode, it's kind of hard to stretch it and make it fit the screen so you can see it better. But they have a lot of trails and they're proposing trails throughout the, throughout the development and a lot of sidewalks, of course, along all those roads, they'll have sidewalks. You'll have an eight-foot multi-use path along the main boulevard that runs right through the middle of the development on that, that east side of the, of that road. And then of course, sidewalks on, along all the road frontages. And the one thing is there's another, that we helped negotiate with the developer is a trail that kind of connects all of those residential parcels on that east side of the development. There's a open space corridor that has a trail that basically connects it from Queen Creek Road all the way up to the north half of the development, a five-foot trail. And then you'll see various trails spread throughout the whole entire development in that red color. So, so lots of pedestrian connectivity and lots of pedestrian access to all neighborhood pods and throughout the development. Here's the phasing plan, just wanted to show you that really quick and how they're proposing to phase it. They're proposing the, the, looks like the commercial and some of the multifamily up in that area first and, and the stuff along the east side, excuse me, the west side. And then they'll phase it down as it comes to the south. They'll continue building out those phases over time as it moves further south. And of course, the infrastructure, the roadways, the major roadways, the, the collector road that runs through the middle and the other collector that tees into it at the north, south of that multifamily high piece will be built in phase one as well. So that the neighborhood has sufficient and adequate access. So as far as staff, as far as the review is concerned, staff has reviewed this project twice. We've had a lot of meetings with the applicant to try and massage the plan and to, to continue to make this a viable, high-quality neighborhood, but staff does have some concerns. And I just wanted to highlight what some of those concerns are. And those are noted in your staff report and probably in a little bit more detail, not too much, but some more detail. So one concern is that the proposal does not, we don't feel that it aligns with the Santan character area vision and the goals and the policies. The overall development, as I stated a minute ago, has about 5.64 dwelling units per acre with about 1,700 homes. That is nearly double the adjacent development to the west and a lot of other developments in the area. That development to the west has about 820 homes, it has some commercial pieces too. That development has about two and a half dwelling units per acre throughout the whole development. So you can see that their density is almost double what they're proposing. The proposed area in the Santan character area, as I stated a little bit ago, is about five dwelling units per acre in the Santan character area, which exceeds the about average of about two to three and a half dwelling units per acre average of other master plan communities in the south, in the, in the Santan character area. We're in the process right now with our GIS team of coming up with a more hard-lined number on what the actual density is within the Santan character area as a whole. But this is an approximate number, about two to three and a half dwelling units per acre is what you're going to see in master plan communities throughout the Santan character area. So again, close to double the, the density that you see in most areas in the Santan character area is what the applicant is proposing. Another concern we have is that the, the applicant is proposing to relocate the required collector on the eastern boundary, which is Coronado Street, to the middle of the development. Staff is concerned about this for, for many reasons, but on a high level, it's required in our transportation master plan to be in that exact location. And it's been that way, established that way for many, many years. And it's also shown in our general plan as a road that is, that is supposed to go through all the way. It stretched, I can't remember how far it goes to the south. Our transportation folks know that better, but it goes all the way to basically to the hospital. And that provides future access to properties to east of the subject site and people that can, north, that lives north and south to be able to continue to, to have good access so they don't, they can kind of maybe get off of Valvista Road a little bit and have another way to go north and south. We're also concerned about cut-through traffic from Perry High School. We know that high schools' traffic can be horrendous. And we are concerned without Coronado going through that, a lot of those, in moving that collector to the center of the neighborhood, that that will provide, it will further congest the neighborhood and make it that collector a more unsafe condition than it, than, than what it needs to be. So we are highly concerned about people not going on Valvista, but taking that cut-through right through the middle of a residential neighborhood. It happens in other places and it is not a favorable condition. Our next concern is that there are 125 alley loaded and townhomes fronting collector streets. And that, that collector street is really the only, the main access for all of the, the rest of the neighborhood. So we're concerned with the, with the safety of residents that live along those, along that roadway and those houses that front their neighborhood, their front doors front that very busy collector street. The parallel parking is a concern for staff. You have bike lanes on the outside of the parallel parking stalls and the conflict there that presents itself is very concerning for staff as well. As I stated, stated a minute ago, that alternative cross-street sex, cross-section, and I just stated the reasons, we're, we're concerned with the, the parallel parking conflict. And we also are concerned about homes only being 10 feet from the sidewalk and about 22 feet from the right-of-way and how that visually looks. We actually have the, the aesthetic design behind that and how it functions. We actually had the opportunity as staff to go to East Mesa and look at a development in Hawes Crossing. And we, their, Lenar is building basically the exact same product there that they're going to be building here, but the street is much shorter. And we were able to see how it's really going to look in real life. And we were, we, we had a lot of concerns. Another concern staff has is the single northern reliever access along the east boundary. I talked about it a little bit already. There is no proposed access for some of those neighborhood pods where you have to wind way back in there to a, they don't, there's no way, other way for them to get out of the neighborhood except for on that central collector street. Again, that adds more congestion to that central, center collector street. And it would be very advantageous if there was another way to get out of the neighborhood along that eastern boundary of the site so you don't have to go back through the neighborhood on a very busy, congested road. The site design also proposes to eliminate the connection of Partridge Drive, which is a collector to the far north to Coronado Street. And that is also on our transportation master plan as a collector that has always been required to go out to, from, from Valvista to connect from Valvista to Coronado. And the applicant is proposing to deadend that at their center collector road. So that's a concern. A couple other concerns before I end that. There are several locations within the single family parcels that lack convenient, conveniently located active space, open space amenities. They have a lot of active open space amenities in this development. But in our residential design guidelines, it states that they need, all homes need to be within 880 feet of an active open space amenity. And there's certain, a few locations in the development where that requirement is not, has not been met yet. They've made some strides in that area, but they're not quite there. The last concern is they have a lot of, they have some deviations. The last concern is they have a lot of, they have some deviations. We have some concerns with the setbacks from commercial and multifamily next to single family. We have concerns with the common area landscaping that they're proposing in the MFH development. They're proposing like 27% where 40% is required. We have some concerns with minimum lot area reductions in SFA and SFD, and then some side landscape setback reductions, or, excuse me, building setback reductions in SFD, SF6 and SF8. They're proposing to reduce some of those in some of those situations. So those are all of staff's concerns. At this current moment, we are still working with the applicant to try and resolve some of these concerns. In fairness to the applicant, they have addressed a lot of the deviations, they have reduced quite a few of them, there were a lot more, and we have been working with them on trying to find some middle ground on some of these deviations. So I just wanted to show you some of these deviations really quick so you have an understanding of what they are instead of me just giving you a brief overview. There is, so some of the deviations in the RC development is next to, the side setback next to residential, 75 down to 68 feet. And then for a rear setback, 75 down to 40, that one's a little more concerning. And then for the landscape setback, for the rear setback on residential, they're going from 40 to 10, that's a pretty, pretty big ask. We would like to see more landscaping and a larger buffer between residential and a commercial development for that transition. And then, of course, there's another deviation in the parking lot near the gas station and the commercial development along Jermaine Road where they want to decrease the throat depth of the entrance from 80 feet down to 60 feet. I'll just blow through some of these. I already talked about this multifamily high deviation from 40, excuse me, it was 45% is what the code requires, and it's in the multifamily high. They want 27% open space in that multifamily high portion of the development. And then another setback deviation in the multifamily medium, rear single family, they want to go down to 18 feet. And that's along the whole southern boundary. There's a transition there between the multifamily medium and the townhomes. So they want, they want less of a buffer between the townhomes and the multifamily medium apartment complex. And then single family, they, SFA, they want to reduce some of the lot sizes, about 400 square feet on this one in SFA. But in fairness to the applicant, again, they are going above and beyond some of our standards. There is no standard for minimum lot width and depth, and they're proposing to establish that. And then they also are proposing no taller than two-story building heights in SFA, which is lower than what the standard requires. SFD, again, some more, a small, a small lot area deviation. And then they are exceeding standards in certain parts and certain alley-loaded, like the front-loaded type products are larger lot sizes. So they are exceeding our code in certain areas. And then a setback deviation as well. And I'll just, I'll just go through these quickly. So again, they are proposing some larger lot sizes up to 8, 8,400 square feet in SF6 where it's minimally 6,000 square feet is required. So lot, and then again, lot width and depth, they are proposing some larger lot sizes. So we do appreciate that. SF8, same deal. They do have some lots that are up to 10,800 square feet, which we appreciate, some larger lot sizes, but then they have the one deviation for a five-foot setback deviation. So that should be all of the deviations that the applicant is proposing. And again, we're still working on some of those with the applicant to try and fine-tune some things and to, to see if we can maybe reduce some of those or eliminate some of those deviations. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on February the 27th. It was a open house-style type neighborhood meeting. There were six surrounding residents or property owners that attended. And town staff also has received some input from some surrounding developers. The developer for the Gilmore Project sent us a letter. That project's under construction now. They have some concerns about the northern portion of the development, including the regional commercial and the multifamily. They feel that that does not align with the area's established vision. They strongly encourage a more true, unique, mixed-use commercial development that is better integrated with the surrounding residential properties instead of, and has higher architectural quality and more pedestrian-friendly placemaking areas instead of a traditional suburban shopping center that doesn't really have any, much integration with the surrounding development. We've also had meetings with the manager of the Gilbert Soccer Fields to the east of the site, and they have, we have met with her several times, and they have expressed concerns with two-story homes next to the soccer field. She has some other concerns that I haven't put in here that I will include later in a future presentation, but she's concerned with lights and the impact that lights could have, the existing light poles on two-story homes. And they have some other concerns that we can, we can communicate at a later date as well. So that concludes my presentation. I know I've bloviated enough sitting up here. I know you guys are probably ready to move on, but like I stated a minute ago, requested input is what your thoughts are on the general plan amendment and, of course, the P E D rezone, the deviations, and the design of the development plan that the applicant has created thus far. So I'm now open to any questions that you may have. Thank you very much for listening to my long spiel tonight.
Thank you, Keith. It was a pleasure to hear your bloviation. Who would like to kick it off for Keith? Commissioner Simon, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Keith, thank you for the presentation. You said the staff has issue with parallel parking. Can you extrapolate on that? Because I don't understand.
Chairman, Commissioner Simon, from a parallel parking standpoint, some of our main concerns with that are the conflict, well, first of all, it's kind of a visual aesthetic appearance as these homes are so close to the street. A lot of parallel parking kind of, kind of, in our opinion, kind of impacts and downgrades a little bit of the visual aesthetic, especially when you have a home that fronts to the street. You walk out your front door and all you do is, all you see is parked cars. That's not a very aesthetically pleasing visual as you walk out your house. That's number one. Number two is, the biggest concern is this cross-section where you have parallel parking in a bike lane on the outside. And you can see in this graphic I have on the screen, we feel that there's a lot of conflict there with the bikes and the parallel parking. Someone's riding by on their bike, someone's trying to parallel park, they're not very good at it, they might not see the biker, hit a biker, or they open their door, they park too close to the green and they knock the biker off his bike. So there's, there's some, there's some biker and parallel parking conflicts that are the problem. But it's, it's more than just that. Like I said, there's some aesthetic issues involved in it as well, and it makes that street just feel very congested. And of course, you have a lot of cars. This is going to be a very highly-traveled boulevard or collector road, and you have that conflict with, with people trying to parallel park. And some people, like I said, aren't very good at it. Not everybody has the car that has the automatic parking feature, but I could, we can see some, some conflicts with all that, that high volume of traffic and people trying to parallel park, so we have some safety concerns with that as well. Does that answer your question? Does that kind of help you understand a little bit? Our traffic team is here as well, and they can kind of go into what their concerns with it are. But it's not a normal condition that we see in the Santan character area is, is parallel parking along a street. I don't believe it exists really anywhere on a collector road.
And it may not exist from a development perspective, but it exists. And so I think that's where I'm tripped up because they're actually going above and beyond, in my opinion, by actually developing what could look better than, say, if I drive through Agritopia and there's parallel parking on all of those streets. And that's not built that way to handle it. So when staff is opposed or has an issue with parallel parking, I just feel like, from a logic perspective, I'd like to know a little bit deeper, and I don't know if traffic wants to speak to that, but just understand a little better why we're opposed to.
Chair, Commissioner, yeah, our standards don't allow for parallel parking on collector roads due to the, the volume of traffic we have as we, as you're trying to move the vehicles through there to have some stop and pull back and forth in the travelway. Local roads, we fully embrace it as long as it meets our standard widths is the plan. Okay, you know what, those are slower volumes, we're not continuing through, it's kind of understood you're in front of homes to allow the parking.
What is the typical speed limit on a collector?
30 miles per hour.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
So let's, let's stay on that point a little. Is there a discussions that maybe consider some share use bike and pedestrians and move the bike lane on one side of the street and then move the traveling on the other side? Because it looks like all these homes is on the west side of that collector. And, and having a share use, like mixed path, is that a considerations or any talk with
Chairman, Commissioner Huang, we did, we have provided the applicant that feedback that we would, and our transportation planning department has suggested and provided a comment early on in the process that they consider and look at moving those bike lanes to be not adjacent to the parallel parking spaces, right next to the travel lanes, to consider a multi-use type situation on the other side of the sidewalk or connected to the sidewalk. We haven't received much feedback from the applicant on that. I don't think they have much interest in that, but that is something that we have asked the applicant to consider.
Okay. All right, so while we're in traffic, maybe I take a little bit deeper. So assuming the density stays what it proposed, your trip gen will be the same. What is the benefit moving that major collector for where they propose to further, further, further east to the transportation master plan?
Thank you. That's something that we've actually asked the developer to provide, a schematic of, okay, what's the benefit of the two locations? They've showed us that it works at Rome, but per our master plan, we want to see that kind of the circulation and see, okay, show us that it is actually better. The way we're seeing is with Coronado, having that, the development along the east side there, they're pushing it all to the center, whereas having a local road to the center and then major collector on the side, they can help distribute their traffic better. They have multiple points of ingress and egress out of the different housing blocks. Right now, it's all a lot of circuitous movement to get to the homes. So that is some, we have some, definitely some circulation concerns there. The nice thing about Coronado, it is at the half-mile, which does provide a little more separation at the different points of entry in there. You look a little farther out, how it connects into, right now, Rome connects into Mercy, which is the whole Santan area with, the way the freeway came in and how things got developed, we have some traffic issues there that are our own. But putting Rome through into Mercy, an already congested area, whereas Coronado kind of shifts and goes down and accesses Val Vista on a different road. So kind of the overall circulation system appears to be slightly better, but it hasn't been, comparative analysis has not been provided.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner DeGervina?
Yeah, since we're on that topic of Coronado and I guess it's 156th Street on the south and Coronado on the north, and the developer has agreed to pave part of the north and part of the south, that's an actual street on the map that you said is eventually going to have to be paved. Whose responsibility is that going to be? Since they're not doing their half if that street does go through, who's going to pick up the tap for that to complete that street? He said it might, at some point in time, be connected.
It'd be the responsibility of the development to put it, as it stands, per our code, the developer would be responsible for putting in their portions of the street. They're requesting not to put it in with the assumption that it would never go in, whereas the town stance is that it is on our master plan, not only would Coronado go all the way through, but Partridge would also go all the way through east-west as well.
I don't think that, but I don't think that's the question. If it doesn't, if it goes in now, it's the developer's responsibility. If it doesn't go in now and this develops and it goes in 10 years from now, I don't think you're going to have the land for it, but then it would be the city's responsibility, wouldn't it?
It would be the city's responsibility, and right now, the development's not proposing the half-street right-of-way width to allow, we'd have to shift over to more to Mesa to put it through, and it'd be on the town's responsibility and cost.
So it's kind of up in the air if that's ever going to be completed, is that correct?
If it doesn't go within with this development per our request, then yes, it would be up in the air if it ever get connected.
I have just a second basic question. You said that the lower 75% doesn't fit in with the Santan character area, and that, and you indicated with what you, how you described this, that the northern 25% even fits in less. Was there any discussion on trying to merge those two so they kind of float better together?
Chairman, Commissioner DeGervina, yes, that would be our preference. I mean, obviously, we feel there's too much density in this development. We have expressed those concerns, that that south half is way far beyond the density than we typically see in the Santan character area, and it doesn't really exist in really anywhere else in the Santan character area. We have had some of those discussions with the developer of trying to decrease the density, but obviously, as you can see in the plan in front of you, we're kind of at a standstill on that. We're still trying to have ongoing and further discussions on that, but this is the plan that they want to move forward with. So they want that, that higher level of density in the north half, but in that Santan character area piece, we would like to see much less density, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Just a minute. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Keith, I have a question, and maybe transportation as well, related to the future expansion of the soccer fields existing, and will that be, will the extension of Coronado, is that desired to go through for future access to that, to accommodate the soccer fields in the future? Is it needed for that? Because right now, it's kind of ignoring, that side of the development is ignoring the soccer fields.
I know there's been conversations with them and with Mesa for their water treatment plant. I know Mesa's interested in having a future secondary access to treatment facility there. Right now, there is a fence around the soccer fields. I was, part of those conversations, but my recollection is it would not, the plan is not to connect through there, partly also for, I know that's to be an impact on the homes there. My understanding is, at this time, is not to connect.
Vice Chair, or actually, Commissioner Huang, why don't you go ahead real quick?
Yeah, I hear a lot about the Santan character area. Can you, Keith, can you help me understand a bit better? Is this a requirement for a certain number dwelling unit per acre, or is that just the whole area feeling that's fit this type of density?
Chairman, Commissioner Wang, that's a very good question. So the Santan character area is, is by goal and by vision, in our general plan, sets forth goals and policies for creating this whole area and what we would like it to, how we would like it to, to be developed in the land use patterns and the density. And in that, that document, it states that the overall goal is about what the three and a half, two to three and a half dwelling units per acre for the whole Santan character area in order to create that vision of a more, I know there's some, a lot of- in order to create that vision of a more, I know there's some, a lot of urbanization that's happened over the years in the Santan character area, but it was originally founded on a more agrarian, well, there was a lot of farming that happened in that area in the past. And to kind of pay homage to the past and to our agrarian historical type roots, we want to make sure that this area and the whole Santan character area is not as dense as certain other areas in the town. And so, we would like to have a target density of, like I stated, about two to three and a half dwelling units per acre. And you really don't see anywhere else in the Santan character area where you have all these apartment complexes. You don't have a lot of apartment complexes and a lot of higher density residential. You see suburban shopping, commercial centers, but it is a goal and a vision to make sure that we pay respects to our agrarian roots to make sure that it has a different character and it feels different. It's their guiding principles. It's not like it's a 100% requirement, but it's a guiding principle to help that area maintain a different character than the rest of the town or certain areas of the town. We have the Morrison Ranch character area, we have the Gateway character area, and they all have a certain look and a certain feel. So that's what we're trying to create in the Santan character area. We want it to be different, unique and different.
So it's not really a hard line, because you mentioned two to three and a half, because that's a big difference, two to three and a half, and then it's not really a standard or a hard line that you draw. It's just visions that we want to feel in this area.
Chairman, Commissioner Wang, that's correct. It's a vision that we have, and we've been able to maintain that vision for the most part. There could be some spots in the Santan character area that may be a little bit higher on the density range, but town staff has been very successful making sure that vision stays intact. And that is the goal on this property, is to make sure that vision is adhered to, or else what's the point of creating a character area?
Thank you. All right, thank you. Vice Chair, did you have anything?
Quite a lot. Sorry. Sorry, Keith, I was making notes all over, so my comments are going to be, and questions are going to be a little disjointed and jumping around here for a second. But in terms of the character area, I met with the developer yesterday, and I think that they have a different impression of what the character area was, how it was described, kind of more, their impression is that it's more overall. Now admittedly, that, if that factors in the density of the adjacent soccer fields and water treatment plant, that kind of gets a little silly, but I would ask that we know, before this item comes forward again, that we really nail down, are we certain our interpretation, are the cities, the towns' interpretation is right? Or if not, why not drill into that a little bit? But I agree with where you're coming from, that yeah, this is density well above the character area. Is it the character area as a whole or for this project is kind of the, I think, the philosophical debate on that. Is that a fair statement?
Chairman, Commissioner Fay, fair statement. We are current, we've currently tasked our GIS team with to check to run an analysis on the entire, every property in the Santan character area to find out what the densities are on, like, this is a half-section piece of land, 311 acres. How does this compare to other properties of the same size? And we're looking at that right now, we're trying to find out what that overall density is and see, we're going to look at, are there projects or properties that exceed the two to three and a half? We don't know all that information yet. There could be, not sure, but we would like to maintain that on this property. We know there's not a lot of land left in the Santan character area. We get that, understand that. Will this project be the linchpin that pushes it, the Santan character area as a whole, over that baseline of two to three and a half? I don't know. We're still, we'll have to bring some more of that information back to you. I find it hard to believe that it would, but you don't see a lot of developments with this much density in the Santan character area. You don't really see barely any apartment complexes. There may be a few, but not many. We don't see alley-loaded product, there may be some, but I don't believe there is in the Santan character area. So this is kind of pushing the envelope of that crystal ball or that vision, as you've heard me say many times, for the Santan character area that we've been able to maintain to make it unique or to make it different than other areas of the town. And we just don't see that this fits the bill as a whole.
Understood. Interestingly, as much as I kind of push back on a lot of these things, the two pieces of this that I have less problem with are the two highest density pieces on the north end. The multifamily high is kind of tucked into a commercial, kind of fits, and then the other ones, actually, the other one, the other apartment building, as I understand it, is actually north of the Santan character area, I mean, barely, but, so that's one or another. Okay. I actually kind of like the central cord, that central spine, that central collector street. I think it's kind of a aesthetic-ish feature. I've talked to traffic engineering about, they're using non-standard cross-sections. The applicant said they're making them bigger, but they've added the on-street parking, which adds a lot of dimension, so I've asked, when this comes forward for real, or before this comes forward for real, I'd like to see a real, accurate, side-by-side comparison of what they're proposing versus our standard cross-section. If anyone, it, to me, it's a pretty substantial burden to not use, if you're going to narrow or eliminate features on a standard cross-section to do that. I mean, I could get it if you have to weave between an SRP Eastment and an RW CD Canal or something, but in general, narrowing or eliminating features is a pretty high burden to get over. On the other hand, widening, usually it's because you want aesthetic or Morrison Ranch, you want to put in a median, that's easier to sell. This one widens, but it also adds on-street parking, which adds a lot of feet, a lot more feet, more than the widening they're doing. So something's got to be, and I didn't have time to get through the, to do in that myself. That's the standard features, but then, okay. Then we get to that, I think the central spine is kind of tied to that eastern boundary road, Coronado, and ordinarily, it's in the transportation master plan, put it in. Dude, just do it, you got to pay for your half-street. There are two arguments against it from what I see. The first is if you, if you look at the mirror image of this project on the other side of Valvista, on the west side of Valvista, what they're proposing to do basically for the section mirrors what's on the other side. Not mirrors, but it's very similar. Whoever did the development on the west side of Valvista essentially moved what would be a straight collector half-street and did some kind of art, I don't want to say artistic, but weavy kind of road that's a little closer to a quarter section or a quarter section thing, and then didn't put in the half-street, half-mile street. And then the second, what was the second piece? Oh, the 156 Coronado alignment, it really doesn't go through. It dead-ends about a quarter mile south of this property, or basically dead-ends a quarter mile or so south of this property, and it doesn't dead-end, but it turns west about a quarter mile or so north of this property. So it's not like it's a regional thing. On the other hand, from a regional flow perspective, it kind of should be there, and if it was there, one, they're never going to put in the half-street without, when, once they're gone, and it would take the Perry, the Perry High School traffic load off of that central spine that I think is going to get jammed up in the middle of the afternoon when, I mean, I remember how I drove as a teenager, it's not, wasn't pretty. And without that there, there's basically no connectivity out of this community to the east, which they don't really have to go to anything in the east, there's soccer fields and the water treatment plant and a cemetery, but some people would at least probably come in and go out that direction, I think. So I'm torn about that. I go back and forth on that east Coronado. I kind of like that, that central, I don't remember what the name of it is, the road in the middle, but it doesn't, by itself, it doesn't justify to me eliminating Coronado altogether. Which actually, the public meeting or the comment, we got, the comments from the soccer field manager don't make any sense to me. What's the problem with two-story buildings overlooking a soccer? I mean, I get if you're overlooking the neighbor's house and you're concerned that they're going to violate your privacy, but what's the problem with them overlooking a soccer field?
Chairman, Commissioner Fay, they're, we've had brief conversations with them about it, but they're just concerned with the lights glaring into people's second-story type windows and things like that.
So they're concerned, they're not concerned with what the development's going to do to them? They're concerned with what they're going to do to the development?
Yeah, I guess if you want to put it that way. They're concerned they're going to get a lot of complaints.
I guess I can see that. That doesn't seem to me to be the developer's problem.
Yeah, I understand, we understand that. We totally understand that.
Okay, fair.
But they're, I mean, they're pre-existing, and they, they don't want to be bad neighbors, they don't want people to think they're bad neighbors or, and so forth, but, I mean, they have some other concerns that we haven't, we haven't brought forward yet, but we will at another time, but.
Okay. Open space, they're failing to meet it in some portions, but overall, they're still meeting or better? It's just that some of it's too far away, is kind of the, is that my impression?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner Fay, the only, as a whole, that neighborhood, it's like 26% open space, which about, what, 15% or so is required per the code, so they do exceed it as a development of a whole, as a whole. The only portion of the development that does not is the MFH, which they want to reduce it from 45% that's required down to like 26% for the MFH parcel only. But as a whole, it does meet it. It exceeds it.
I got to, I'm usually not, if they're, if they're making up for it elsewhere on the property, I usually don't, from my perspective, I usually don't care that much. It's just me, but hey, we'll pay you, we'll pay you back two for one if you count some of this stuff a few, you know, a few hundred feet down the road. That to me doesn't seem like a big, a big bad thing to me. I'm looking at the various deviations, some good, some bad. I'll tell you, that 60 to 80 foot on the throat, that to me seems kind of meaningless. It's right by that gas station part, it's a right-in, right-out. That, I would think traffic engineering, you guys could work that one out pretty easily. The ones on the lot size seem a little, or the lot size ones are significant, the lot dimensions, I think, are kind of meaningless. If you're, if you're, if we don't have any set lot dimensions, but we do have a lot, a set lot size, and they're willing, well, we want to deviate down on the lot size and we'll grant you the dimensions, I don't know that that's a really a, I mean, yeah, you, no one's going to put in a 1600 by one-foot lot, so granting those minimum deviations is not really a, I don't know that that's even a thing. The throat, I'm not worried about that. Open space all over the place. I made a comment about the, and about the deviations. I don't think the homes, the 10-foot or the less than 10-foot, I don't think that that's, I think there are some places where they're talking about going down to under 10-foot, but I don't think any of that's along the collector streets, is it?
Chairman, Commissioner Fay, some of those are those, those, those single-family detached homes that I like to call the row homes. They want to go from, the setback is supposed to be zero on one side and like five on the other, and what that, what that does is that creates a 10-foot or actually a wider space to where they can comply with our patio requirements, where they need to have like a six-foot deep patio that has a cover over it, and if they go five feet on one, on each side, they can't comply with that standard. So normally, what we see is in these situations and these types of developments, you'll see the developer go zero on one side, then they'll have 10 on the other, and then they can fit the required patio in. In this situation, they won't be able to fit that covered patio. They're actually, they'd actually be proposing, we went to Mesa and saw their homes, they are proposing no cover over the patio, maybe like a foot, if that, over the entrance door that leads to a side yard, which is a, which is a private open space area. So that wouldn't afford them to be able to do that.
I'm not advocating for any of the downward deviations. Sometimes we can accept some, sometimes we can't. I usually actually kind of defer to you guys on that one, but I'm saying that I don't think any of the downward deviations are against the collector street, are they?
Commissioner Fay, I'd have to look more into exactly where they, where they are. Some of them might be. I think they are, some of those row homes ones are, but the rest of them, I'm not, I don't remember off the top of my head. I'd have to look into it a little more.
Okay. Okay, that.
I think it's spread out around the, it's spread out throughout the single-family.
Okay. And I just want to, this isn't, this is a, I guess this is probably my last, this is my last point, but it's kind of a minor one. We keep referring to the Mesa plant, I think it's a joint plant, isn't it? Mesa brought the most money to it, but I think Chandler, Gilbert, Mesa, they all, I mean, there's a reason it's here. It's, I think all the cities use it, don't they?
Chair, Chairman, Vice Chair Fay, what do you, so, excuse me, what are you talking about again? The plant, the water treatment plant?
The water treatment plant. It's not just a Mesa plant. I think they're the administrators of it because they brought the most money to it, but I remember I was running capital improvement in Chandler when it was being built, and we were contributing money to it, and I think, I assume Gilbert was too.
Vice Chair Fay, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not even sure. I don't know much about that plant at all. All I know is it's there. That's all I know about it.
It's not, I don't think it's just, I don't think it's Mesa's plant. I mean, clearly, it's quite a ways from Mesa.
It's Towne Gilbert's plant, but I don't know who also, what else feeds into that from what other jurisdictions.
It's a joint, it's a joint plant. I think that, interestingly, the Coronado is getting built by the cemetery. They're kind of the ones who lead it, need it the least. Yeah, that resolved. That's all my comments and questions.
All right, thank you. I know that we all had a lot of questions, and I just wanted to note that the developer was here. It's not standard to bring them up, however, if there's questions that you felt they might be able to better answer, I wanted to at least address that opportunity. Does anybody oppose, or would anybody like to have the developer explain any of this? I don't need it. Sure.
I think maybe just to answer Commissioner Fay's question with regards to the setback or the frontage on the, on the main collector there.
Yeah, and if, and I'll just, I'll just put two things out, and Keith, and then we'll give Mr. Ray a moment, but when we talk about the density of this parcel, I just want to understand, are we looking at it as the whole parcel including this commercial on top? Or is it saying that everything south of the Mason-Dixon line there is in the Santan, and therefore, that's the density?
Chairman, we looked at the density as, at 5.64, includes the commercial, includes everything, it's gross acreage of everything. I mean, it would, the density, if you included just the residential, I don't, I haven't crunched those numbers, so I don't know what it would be.
No, understood. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we included the commercial too.
Because I know we've talked a bit about the character area, but then there's the top 20, 30% of the site that I just want, I want to be sure I had a clear picture of So the layout, the road, it sounds like a major linchpin of this is both the developer's contention that they don't want that collector there, then moving it in. How much of the disagreement, I, or however you like to say it, if the middle road was not in fact a collector, and it was set up with the setbacks lesser and the alleyway homes and things, like, how much does creating a collector next to these exacerbate what would be the problem, or would it not be a problem if it was not a collector? Does that?
How can it not be a collector?
If the other, I'm saying that if they actually had to put in that other road.
Yeah, it would still be a collector, though, wouldn't it?
It would still, and I guess that's a question, would that still be a collector?
Chairman, yeah, there's two different issues of the overall size. One, kind of the densities Keith was mentioning, but then also the circulation. So having Coronado would open up some more circulation to the east. We recommend this being a smaller road then, allowing it to be more of a local road, trying not to encourage more of those reduced traffic things. That way, they could have on-street parking there, and so that would alleviate a lot of our concerns, but it depends on what's the cross-section they were trying to go for here. And if they wanted to maintain that wide, full, large cross-section collector-style road here, we'd still have our concerns about our standards and meeting our standards and safety concerns with those.
Right, understood. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and you know, the question that I have too is just, and I'd want clarity on when this comes forward, would be just, you know, a very intensive illustration on a traffic study of what this is going to impact, and I know that the developer has talked about it, and that would likely be a part of it, but I, I just really want to understand, with a cemetery and no traffic coming from the fields and a wa, and a water treatment plant, no traffic will be coming directly from that other side, which leaves then the high school, which, you know, they are American citizens, so we can't denigrate them like Vice Chair Fay for being a hoodlum, but nonetheless, I want to understand how many of those trips would come out. Um, because I don't think many will come from the cemetery or the fields and whatnot. But nonetheless, I also then just wanted to bring, um, Mr. Ray up just to answer that question and then if there was any other question that could help us as we, you know, do this. Because it seems like a pretty big issue to me of the, the roadway and everything. Thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, Brendan Ray, twenty-three, twenty-five East Camelback. Thank you for the opportunity. I will, um, I will address the question that was asked relative to the collector road. First and foremost, um, with respect to setbacks or deviations, we are not requesting any for those homes. Uh, the alley homes that front on the collector nor to the townhomes. Uh, and in response to, uh, the comment about, you know, staff was, um, there's been so many discussions going on, on things that sometimes things get lost in the details. And, and, and our setback for those alley homes, uh, the ones on the west side of Rome Street is not ten feet. Uh, it is actually fifteen feet. Uh, and so we have increased those setbacks. Additionally, in that particular area, wanting to separate private from public open space, um, we have, uh, put, we're going to put a low fence there as well. Um, and so with respect to the, to the setbacks, we are not, or deviations, we are not requesting any for any of those collector roads. We've tried to minimize, uh, it and tried to design that road in such a fashion consistent with other developments. Uh, we've taken the good and the bad from other developments relative to this collector road. Uh, someone mentioned Agritopia. We're all aware of Morrison Ranch and homes fronting onto collectors in Morrison Ranch as well. Uh, and tried to create a, a better way to do things with respect to, um, Rome and how these homes front onto it. Um, similarly with the bike lanes, I know we've, we've talked a bit about that, again, focusing on the alley homes and the impact that that community might have. We know very well that there's parallel parking that exists, uh, within the town, uh, exists in Cooley Station on Williams Field Road, where you have parallel parking, a bike lane, and two lanes of traffic on a very busy arterial street. I know that that condition of, of parallel parking, bike lanes and collectors is not unique to what we are proposing here. I know, for example, it exists in downtown Chandler as well. And so again, as we look at the design of it, uh, trying to keep safety at paramount, that's why we've designed it, recognizing that we do have homes fronting on to it. We've designed it with, um, pop-outs, um, and very purposefully designed those to where they will throw it down to slow the traffic. Um, we are as concerned about safety on the road as the town is and believe that, um, again, with homes fronting on to it, not only the alleys, but the townhomes, that we're doing that. Additionally, um, we are providing a multi-use path, um, contrary to what, uh, was indicated, uh, in your plans on the cross-section plan, there is an eight-foot multi-use trail, um, path that exists on the west side, excuse me, on the east side of Coronado, Coronado, of Rome Street. And so again, hopefully that kind of addresses the question about safety, security of those homes that front onto Rome Street relative to setbacks and stuff like that. Um, happy to, happy to, uh, answer any additional questions that you feel are necessary as you guys consider this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any clarifying you want of what we have? All right. Well, very good. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, well, this is a study session, so I think, you know, given what we've said thus far and I recognize that as we're working through it. Uh, but in closing, does anyone else have any additional guidance? Commissioner Davis, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just asked a question earlier. I do have a few things, um, I wanted to note. Um, I echo a lot of what Commissioner Fay said about the sand tan character area, just, um, as far as my position on that. Um, one thing that I don't think we really got into is why there's not an access point provided on the south end to Coronado like there is on the north. I think that would be really important. I think everything being funneled over to that collector, it's a lot. And I think that's good. I just, I think there needs to be another reliever on that east side, whether that be the street going all the way through or at a minimum that we see that at both ends, that somebody could go that direction to get out of their neighborhood and not having to just all be pushed over to that, um, collector street. I have mixed feelings on the houses facing the collector. I think all of the things that they've added with the parallel parking and the, um, bump-outs for landscaping, those things will slow people down and I think that's necessary if you're going to have houses facing that. I would prefer to see those houses pulled back a little bit. I do appreciate they've added a low wall to separate those homes. But, um, so I, I think some of those mitigating factors to reduce speeds are necessary if you're going to have houses facing that street. Um, so I think those are some good things. Um, but I can see where they're concerned that there's a lot happening. A kid runs out, there's a car in the way, there's a bicycle, bicy- bicyclists coming, you've got, you know, a lot of activity happening. But hopefully that's slowing down traffic and makes it for a better situation. Um, and let's see. As far as the reductions that they're requesting, I'm never huge on asking for a whole bunch of deviations. Um, I'd like them to be really thoughtful about which deviations they ask for and to show us what we're getting to offset those deviations in the quality of the overall development. So I really think we need to be getting great quality to offset any deviations that they're requesting and I think they should show that to us. So, um, with that, I think I covered my comments, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Davis, Vice Chair Fay, I think you have some?
I, I addressed all my details, but, uh, it just, in kind of a closing, uh, there's a lot going on, on this one, and there's a lot of open, open-ended pieces on this one. I put a lot of deference on state, on, on staff opinions and expertise, but I'm also a pretty radical free-market libertarian capitalist that gives a lot of deference to the landowner. And I didn't, I mean, if, if you bring it to us in this condition, we'll decide. But I think we'd all like, to the extent able, you guys, you know, it looks like there's a lot of work to do on this before it comes forward. Uh, there's, there's a lot of pieces that are still not, not fitting into the, the puzzle. So good luck before it comes forward. If it, if it comes forward like this, we'll decide. We just, I think I, I speak for the group, we'd rather not. We'd rather, we'll decide, but we'd rather decide something that's more focused, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Huang?
Got a closing. Um, there are a lot of talk about the density and the sand tan character area and all this. I'm just leaving it as it is. I do have the pressure to read the traffic report. There are quite a bit of comments, uh, between the town, uh, traffic engineers, um, about the access point on that main corridor, uh, collector. Um, on Queen Creek, you have four traffic signal within half a mile, and that's a lot. And putting that access point over there, the left turn, uh, base, it's really short, that need to work out. So there are a lot of detail in terms of traffic, uh, you know, encourage the developer, work out with the, the town staff. Um, you know, our town is getting more and more congested with the traffic with more population. That's just the nature it is, and we have an opportunity in here to, to make this not only work for the existing, um, resident, but also the future resident as well. So I, I strongly encourage to work out some of those detail when this push forward. Uh, in terms of on-street parking, I'm not a big fan of putting a bike link right next to on-street parking. It exists in a lot of areas, including some of those, uh, arterial, but the character of the cyclists are different. Usually are more mature, uh, experienced cyclists on the arterial street. But here, we're talking about neighborhood with kids and family and, and those are immature cyclists. So, you know, I encourage to maybe look at alternative, uh, cross-sections. You know, look for, you know, the shared path, uh, bike link and, uh, um, a potential sidewalk and then put the, uh, on-street parking and traveling on one side. So, uh, that's my, my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Huang. Well, Commissioner DeGervina, you want to close out? He's said enough. Perfect. All right, well, we've, uh, gone extraordinarily over. Um, I, I'll just echo the sentiments that, uh, I think that there's some work to do. However, I want to say that nobody mentioned that, I don't believe that there's any commercial here and they took an added commercial, which we usually take the flogging stick to developers for changing anything and that they actually added commercials. So I just want to get that onto the record that, uh, they did that. And that that gets into, you know, and Vice Chair Fay had said that there's, there's trade-offs and we all understand that. And so as, looking at this, I think there's been some acquiescence of that. Um, but at the same time, you know, with the issues that exist and the sta- you know, the standoff for the, the differences of opinion between the staff and the developer, I hope they can, you know, massage some of those out like a fine piece of clay. But I will say this, that in the fear of anyone else deciding to take that road as a collector, um, at least in my demographic, if I drive down and there's a bunch of bike lanes and people parallel parking and the scooters flying all around, I avoid that like the plague. So that might be part of what their traffic dampening is, is by making it so that, um, yeah, I, I, I just, I happen to be like George Carlin. Anyone going slower than me is an idiot, anyone faster is a maniac. And so I, I tend to stay out of these types of areas. But with that being said, I will, uh, move on from this agenda item. Thank you all very much and thanks to the developer representative, um, for showing up to help some clarity here. And we'll move on to item number two in the discussion of the regular meeting agenda that, uh, of course, for our many fans online, have note that we're a little bit late on. So on the agenda, we have the consent of item six Sheffield Place and item seven, the Mogul Payne Middle School, Broadleaf Tree. Um, I know that, uh, Commissioner Davis, uh, has to recuse herself from number six? Or not recuse, I'm sorry. Has requested to remove item six from consent. She does not need a presentation or, um, any of that, but just has some statements. It has an opinion, yeah. She will be heard. Um, so that is going to be removed. And then I know on the regular agenda, we have eight and nine are the LDC text amendments. And there was some discussion that we could move that. Is there anyone here in the sea of individuals here in the chambers that wishes to speak on either the text amendment items eight or nine? Through the clamoring, I do not see anyone, so we may be able to, or is anyone against moving those to the consent? Like at a wedding, you got to speak now or?
I think those are, those are two very straightforward, they're in response to state law changes that it seems to me they're tailor-made for consent unless someone has a problem with them.
Okay, and then with item seven as a continuance, is that allowed to just stay there then? Or do I have to remove that as well and then make a motion on to continue it? See Elena, she's, those attorney wheels are turning now.
I think to be consistent, I've asked that it be done separately.
Okay, so...
Well, if that's the case, how long is this one going to keep? I guess till July ninth? Do we just keep continuing that once a month or can we just put it when we think it's going to happen?
That's what we're doing it, but we're doing it by the rules. So everything's off consent and then the LDC is on. So we're doing a full inversion.
I'm talking about future agenda. Instead of July and August continuing it till the next meeting, could we?
Stay on task. We're only talking about this agenda.
Okay, all right.
Vice Chair, thank you, sir. All right, well, with that then, I will adjourn this study session. Thank you all for your input and participation. And we will take a very brief five minutes to stretch and enjoy some water and we'll see you back here for the regular programming. Thank you. and enjoy some water and we'll see you back here for the regular programming. Thank you. No. All right. Now that we are all back and ready for action, I will call to order the regular meeting. Oh, wait, Ashley's not here. I'm going to retract my calling to order because I think. No, it's, you can see Keith here.
Keith is the problem.
Oh, Keith is the problem.
It has to do with additional bloviation outside of the, no, no, I'm just, I'm just picking on Keith because he knows I love him. Okay. Now that the fearless leader has arrived, I will call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me. Thank you all. May I please get a roll call?
Alternate Commissioner Hong?
I'm here.
Alternate Commissioner Lyon. Commissioner De Gravina.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Simon.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson. Vice Chair Fay.
Yeah.
And Chairman Munt.
Vice Chair steals my jokes. Here, I.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on next to the approval of the agenda, which we discussed at length and we'll be doing a full inversion. So item six and seven that are currently on the consent will be moved from the consent and item eight and nine will be moved to consent from non-consent. So unless there's any further discussion.
Chair, I move to, do I have to do a motion for this?
Yes, please.
I move to remove six and seven from consent and to move eight and nine onto consent.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, seven zero. Okay. We now have communications, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and the commission may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore pursuant to state law, action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration. With that being said, we do have one card here, Cody Burr, and he just would like to speak. So Cody, please come up. You can hit the button and then take three minutes or state your name and your place of residence.
Sounds great. My name is Cody Burr. I'm a resident of Gilbert. I live 1385 East Chestnut Lane, about a quarter mile on the southeast corner of the Harvest Grove potential development. Just wanted to come and kind of share some additional insight that I just kind of want to put in the back of your minds as you consider approving or denying that project. So right now Gilbert ranks a hundredth out of the hundredth largest cities in park access. So U.S. with only 65% of residents living within a 10-minute walk to a park, below the national median of 75%. And before I continue, I'm not some hippie dippy save the trees dude, very much drill baby drill. But I think there's got to be a balance maintained between all the development that's going on in Gilbert right now and with what Gilbert used to be, the Gilbert that I grew up in, all the farmland, growing up on a dairy, growing up on a farm. It was all the heart of Gilbert. And right now, only 65% of Gilbert residents, residents live, you know, within a 10-minute walk of a park or even, any even type of open land. And so as I started to look into the main general plan that was approved in 2020 for Gilbert, I started finding a lot of things that contradicted the plan that's proposed here. And I know Keith and some of the other members of the plan came forward and mentioned some of those staff concerns and whatnot that kind of goes against the, I guess, the original plan that was voted on. But I would like to say that the sand town character area was designed to preserve our Sonoran and rural agricultural roots in 2000. And, and there were 6,400 acres of aged land and SCA and now there's only less than 2,000. So by losing another 311 acres, where are we going to draw the line? We have to draw the line somewhere. We had that hard stop in the 2020 general plan. And so what's the point of making a general plan and setting up these different character developments if by the time push comes to shove, it's just kind of like, well, what's another little bit? What's another little bit? And then sooner we know it, we don't really have much land left. We don't really have much of our character, of our culture or anything like that left. And so that's kind of what I want to bring up. The goal in SCA 1.8 is to encourage development of agri, of agribusiness and support existing agricultural uses. I'm not saying we have to completely shoot down the plan, but I'm saying maybe a portion of that acreage can be made into some type of park, maybe a lake, some fishing, all that good stuff. And just a place to take some good walks and to not overly congest Gilbert. I mean, it feels like every single inlet of land is being developed into multifamily. And so I'm finding myself, along with many other Gilbert residents, as you look on, you know, the Facebook, Instagram, all the other different social medias where these different projects are being like proposed or hey, new development starting. All the comments are just like, why are they tearing up like the heritage of what made Gilbert Gilbert? And, and I know that they already addressed some traffic and infrastructure concerns and whatnot, but I would really look into that general plan. And there's at least 12 different points of hard contention that goes against the general plan that would, it just doesn't, it doesn't align. And so that's kind of my main, my main reason I've just come before you guys today, just to kind of revisit that general plan, put it against the plan that was proposed and then really see if this is what's really necessary for Gilbert, is more multifamily necessary for Gilbert? Or would it be more flourishing as we continue to have more of those spaces where we could have the family roots that Gilbert grew up on, you know, being able to, to enjoy the, the, you know, where we grew up. And so that's kind of my, my main thing. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. If anyone else had wished to have any communications, I only had the one yellow card. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, report from the council liaison on current events. And I noticed that Council Member Lyons was not here. Was there any?
I'm online. I'm online.
He's in the matrix. Sorry about that, Councilmember.
I'm in the matrix.
All right, sir.
That's perfectly all right.
Take it away.
No, I don't have any message at this time other than the fact that I'm here. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate it. Okay. Now we'll move on to the public hearing consent calendar. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. Commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests that item be removed from the consent calendar. Such a request is made, the commission shall withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. You'll note that we did both of these actions today. So into item, first item we have on the consent calendar is item eight, Z 2507 LDC text amendment and item number nine, Z 2504 LDC text amendment. So with these, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Chairman Munt, I move to approve the consent agenda now consisting, as revised, now, or as amended, now consisting of items eight and nine.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Please cast your vote. All right. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move inverted back to item number six. Well, actually, I'll tell you what, let's do item seven first since it's a simple continuance.
Chairman Munt, I move to continue item seven.
We have a motion for continuance of UP 24-50T Mobile slash Payne Middle School dash WCF Broadleaf Tree to July 9th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Simon once again. Please cast your vote. On fire, unanimous, seven zero. Item number six, S 24-06 Sheffield Place. This is a request to approve preliminary plat and open space plan for Kahevovian Homes. Sixty seven home lots and approximately 10.97 acres generally located southeast of the intersection of Gilbert Road and Civic Center Drive pending a rezoning to single-family detached SFD with a planned area development PAD overlay. I know that Commissioner Davis had something she would like to say on this and I will also open it to anyone else if you do, but.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to state that I pulled it from consent because last month, when we saw the zoning case for this, I was not supportive of the project. My biggest concern related to the allocation of the open space, therefore I'm not going to be supporting the preliminary plat and open space plan.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have any input?
Yes, I.
Commissioner De Gravina?
Yeah, thank you. Chairman Munt, I feel the same way. Last month I wasn't able to support it. My concerns, I felt it was a very crowded development and for those reasons, I can't support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For the interest, I'm going to open up the public hearing just to do that and confirm, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item Sheffield Place? Okay. Well, then, very good. I will then close the public hearing and then bring it back up and we'll continue our discussion. Vice Chair Fay.
So last month, I, we jokingly, I referred to it as my calibrated eye. I looked at this and said, man, there's no way this is 20 or 19% open space. I drilled pretty hard into it. It's, it is 19%. I, I don't like the way it looks. It looks kind of ten minute hell's kitchen, tenement-y, but it does meet the, it met the standard. I still have a lot of concerns about the parking, but I think my concern is really with the way city code allows parking to be calculated. I think this is going to be a mess in terms of parking and particularly the, the garbage parking that they get 10 more spaces on non-parking. Now, that's going to be, that's going to be a disaster. But I don't think they're counting those 10 spaces as part of their minimum. I think that's in addition. I think to, to some degree, what their answer would be is legitimately, if you think that's so bad, we're just going to write it off. And I think they could do that. I think that this is a poster child for why in some narrow circumstances, the city's land development code related to parking is, is too narrowly drawn. But that said, they meet it, is my, so it's, I go back and forth, but I think it's a, I'll, I may have to hold my nose, but I would vote for it probably.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Okay. Well, in, in that case, I will open it up for a motion, whichever way anyone feels.
I'll make a motion to approve S 24-06 Sheffield Place preliminary plat and open space plan.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Gage. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Simon coming through with the second. Any further discussion from anyone? Not seeing any, please cast your vote. Narrow, four to three, squeaks by, pass. Very good. Thank you all very much for the input. Back to the agenda where we will move on to the administrative items and we'll just move on to the first item, 10, Planning Commission minutes. Consider the approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting from May 7th, 2025. I have those minutes here. I think they're all in our packets. I hope everyone had a chance to review them. Does anyone have any comments or amendments that they felt were required? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Chair, make a motion to approve minutes as written.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Simon and a second from the Vice Chair Fay. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, seven zero. Back to unanimous consensus building. All right, we'll move into the communications. There is no executive session, so we will have a report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events.